Do you want to start?
Do you want me to welcome people? We have people on.
Yeah, we have people everywhere. Judy and Laurel are online.
Judy and Laurel, and then I see Donovan Zemici, I see Kevin and Lynn Grant, Andrea B. You know Andrea B?
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming to our Community Development Block Grant Public Hearing. Do you want to start?
Sure, sure.
You have to turn one of those on when coming here.
So, welcome. Thank you. This is exciting. I want to, I want to thank our team, especially Erin and Darlene, for all the work that's going into getting this application ready. We have not received community development block grant funding in quite some time. There was a time when Beverly was a regular, successful applicant recipient back, gosh, 80s and 90s. And the program changed significantly at the federal level in the early 2000s. And we've had very little success since. Now, we have, during my tenure as mayor, we've twice made application that we thought were strong app, we knew were strong applications, and they did not get funded. So, we went and we met with housing leadership at the state level last year. And we said, listen, we, we don't want to, you know, bang our heads against the wall. So, we got some, you know, we had a real frank conversation about Beverly's demographics and about the fact that we do have need and that, you know, it's worth trying. So, we've got, and Darlene can introduce our consultant team. They're online with us. But we've been working at this for a while, and there are some very specific and somewhat rigid requirements for process for putting an application together. I don't want to go deeper than that because Darlene will. But, look, we know, those of us who live our lives in the city and everybody here is working hard to make it a better city, we know that there's real need and we know that there are opportunities. We look at the parameters of this program, what money can be used for. And we know we can make a difference, a positive difference, if we can get some of these resources in this grant round. So, we're excited you're here to share. I'm going to go sit, I'm getting, going to get personal for a minute. I'm going to sit in that chair because 60 years ago, my dad sat in that chair as the Word six city councilor. So, I'm going to go sit there and let Darlene run the, run the show here. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to just thank our city councillors who we have here. Councillor Hausman, Councillor Spain, Councillor Crowley, Councillor Rotundo. We have a couple, well, it's a school committee, Dr. Canet. Now, we're missing it. I know, Canet, that's your first name. Yes, sorry. And, um, do I see anyone? Am I missing anyone else? No. No other elected officials, but thank you to everyone for coming. And I would like to introduce our consultant team. So, we are working with experts in the CDBG program. Judy Barrett, who runs Barrett Planning Group, and her colleague Laurel Meyer are online, as well as Elisa Zimmerman, who's not here, but they've been working with us and providing us guidance so that we can create a stronger application, the strongest application. And it's been really, really helpful. So, next slide. What? Oh, yes. A slide. Slides, please. And thank you to Ken for manning our, our technology today. If you are on Zoom, you can raise your hand. I'm going to go over that in a second. I think it's supposed to ding, but Ken will kind of go back and forth and try to keep track of that. Next slide. So, just a couple of ground rules, partially for the people online. And for all of you, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed by BevCam. It'll be, it's both on BevCam's YouTube channel as well as the television, Channel 6 and Channel 1073. And it will be shared on our website after the fact. We will have a link to the YouTube channel. So, for anyone online, if you can keep yourself on mute, that would be helpful. Hopefully, by now, everyone knows how to do that, but it's on the bottom left of the Zoom screen. And as I said, use the raise hand feature, or we will take comments despite what this says. And when we get to questions and answers, we will entertain comments and questions in the chat, but maybe hold off until the Q and A portion. And for anyone else, just be like your name and affiliation. We do need to record for our grant application who attended this meeting. So, if everybody can sign in, there's a sign in sheet at, at the lectern and one up here. And I will record, we will record who's on the Zoom call. Please don't fight getting to the sign in sheet, though. And I just want to flag too, so despite this meeting and for all the people that are hopefully watching it on BevCam as well, you can submit public comments to me, dwynnne@beverlyma.gov up until March 31st. The sooner the better, but we will continue to accept comments until then. I also want to thank Catherine Barrett for being here. She's also working on this grant with us, as well as other staff, Bruce and Monkari, and everyone else who's here. So, thank you. Next slide. He is. And this is the first time we're using Zoom in this whole platform, so. So, what is the Community Development Block Grant Program? It is, as Mayor said, we've had it, we had it a number of years ago. It's a flexible, successful federal grant program, one of the oldest, well, most flexible that's offered to communities. You don't need that screen. I don't know how that works, but I'll keep going. And it's administered by Housing and Urban Development at the federal level, passed through to the state. So, we are applying to the state of Massachusetts. It's been administered since 1974. And it's a formula grant, so it considers different measures of need. I don't know. Namely, poverty, population characteristics, housing density, the age of housing, and population growth. There are three different, there are entitlement communities automatically in the program. And then this is, we're in the application phase because we don't qualify in that sense, although we did earlier, as the mayor said, in the 80s and 90s. Now, we are, we are trying to apply to the state of Massachusetts in order to participate in the program. I know, it didn't do this in our test, so. But I can, it's still fine. We can keep going. But I am on the next slide. So, the CDBG program can pay for, covers four categories: housing, economic development, public services, public facilities, and infrastructure. And at least 70% of the funds of, so there's, there's a set of key requirements. And as the mayor mentioned, it's kind of complicated and very detailed in its application. 70% of the funds has fund activities that benefit low income, lower moderate income people. And every activity must meet a statutory national objective. So, that national objective is, relates to benefiting of low and moderate income people, aiding in the prevention and elimination of slums or blight, and meeting an urgent need. So, every year, that's defined in the state's plan and the federal plan. So, in terms of what parameters we have to meet, but those are standard. Those three activities, three statutory requirements must be met as part of the national objective. So, we can also include, so the public social services component of it has a cap of 15% of our ask. And the, the, we are allowed to ask for up to $850,000 for an 18-year, 18-month time period. Sorry. And so, that's the max grant that we could apply for. Next slide. Maybe? So, again, there's four categories. And these are just some examples of activities that could be funded under those, under those categories. I will. Let's see. Like, do I want to read them? I'll read them for you. I mean, housing, a lot of home, housing-related funding, economic development loans for small businesses or signage and facade improvement, job training and workforce development, a whole range of public services from healthcare, food service, crime prevention, childcare support, technical assistance, homelessness prevention, domestic violence prevention, and substance abuse, and then infrastructure, roads and sidewalks, parks, park improvements, community facilities, and accessibility. Next slide. So, low income, torn between that and this, is based on the regional household income limits, which are adjusted for your household size. And they're set by Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, each year. So, there are three tiers: extremely low income, very low income, and low income, which is 80% of the area median income for low income, 50% for, of the area median income, that which is calculated for the region that we are assigned by HUD. That's the area. And then extremely low income is 30%. So, our family median income for FY 2024 is 148,900, just for context. That is our median. And let's see. What's the next? Oh, it says the U.S. Census median household income is 103,700 for the American Community Survey, which was the five-year from 2019 to 2023. Next. So, the timeline of this, we started in January. Our grant application is due April 14th. It's been a mad dash. I mean, I would say we, we started with Barrett Planning Group in January. The internal team has kind of started processing this beforehand and getting ready. The grant application period is actually later this year than it usually is because they were upgrading their grant system. We've conducted a needs assessment, which included a windshield survey of properties that we think could benefit from rehab, just to get, just generally to get a sense of certain areas and where there might be need for that. We did a mapping analysis with the consultant to kind of understand demographics and where we have concentrations of low and moderate income households. And we've collected a whole range of data from our stakeholders. Result, that resulted from six community stakeholder focus groups that we had with city staff and other social services providers, late January, early February. These were really, really insightful and informative, and we got a lot of good feedback, good data there. And then, we actually have a public survey, which was supposed to go out a couple of weeks ago, but we've had a lot of technical difficulties, but it is available today. So, we're going to keep that open too. You know, it's, it's good data for us to collect, one way or another, but also we'll keep that open as we prepare the application. And that will be, it's on the website already. It'll be, there'll be a link at the last slide, too. And actually, if you take a flyer, there's a little sticker with the web link there, so. And we'll share that out starting tomorrow. Next slide. So, some of the key takeaways from our needs assessment and citizen participation, which this is also part of, is, I thought you were, so housing. So, really, like, the nuts and bolts of it in talking to all of these social service providers and city staff and other kind of community members was, the need is really back to the basics. It's housing, food, and transportation. And food and transportation and maybe medical expenses are lacking because people are putting those off in order to pay for housing. So, that's kind of the gist of what we heard. But some of the needs that were identified are, you know, alleviating the housing instability, preventing evictions, rental assistance, keeping people in their homes through rehab or other means, creating more housing units, the accessibility of housing, and removing barriers for particularly elders for staying in their home. And then, related to other support services, you know, the other social, public social services that we could seek funding for, language access and translation, digital equity came up, assistance. A lot of times, it was this kind of assistance, knowing where to go, to find out where you need to go. Right? So, that kind of elusive, you know, person or navigator to try and help people get the services they need and connect them to that. Food insecurity, as I mentioned, was a big deal, and transportation, particularly transportation to jobs or medical appointments, mental health and legal assistance, and financial literacy. Next slide, please. So, Mayor mentioned we'd had, we were part of the CDBG, CDBG program as a mini entitlement community from the late 80s to the early 2000s. I have dug through a little bit of those files. Some of the, a lot of the main programs that we were funded then were housing rehab, lead abatement, and housing assistance. We did fund some new housing creation. We funded a facade improvement program for a period of time, and some other public social services, as well as public infrastructure projects, like parks, roadways, and sidewalks improvements. Next one. So, for, for this grant, so part of this, the next part of this meeting will be to hear what you all have to say. We've kind of honed in on one activity that we think would be a good lead activity for our grant. We're entertaining, and we're discussing still, you know, possible second activity that might fall under the public social services, so that 15% cap of the total grant. We do want to apply for the full amount that we can, the 850,000. So, we follow these kind of metrics for how to identify what type of project we want to go, we want to apply for. So, again, they have to meet the CDBG national objective, so serving low and moderate income families or addressing blight and/or, what was the last? No, urgent need. Thank you. Yeah. So, there has to be data available to document that need. There has to be the ease, you know, we have to have an ease of showing that the low and moderate income persons will benefit from the activity. It has to be a new activity or an expansion of an existing activity. It can't be used to fund a general, a general government service. It can't be used to just continue funding something that we already do in the same way that we do it today. And we have to have, as a city, the capacity to implement this new activity. And we have to be ready to go, or shovel-ready, when we get the grant. So, that's kind of, that's a big one, too. And shovel-ready is a development term, but obviously not necessarily talking about building something. And then, the activity, we kind of didn't want it to be something that could be funded somewhere else, some other way also, like, be able to fund something that we haven't been able to provide in a long period of time. So, we also, which I don't think I put on there, you know, used, relied on our consultants to tell us what, what we have a good chance of being funded by. So, housing rehab really rose to the top. City of Beverly has operated a housing rehab program in the past successfully, although it was before my time and before many of our times. We do have a history, the Council on Aging, in terms of what type of need. There are some, some different needs that potentially could fall under the public social services category that could help Chris expand a program or run a new program, potentially around food service. We talked about digital literacy. We talked about language access needs. So, those are some of the things that we evaluated. Kind of, we, for this period, ruled out kind of infrastructure projects. We aren't going to go in that direction. We originally talked about, you know, also, some of the programs are harder to implement. And something like a small business, micro enterprise loan does fall under that in terms of being harder to implement. So, we, we stayed away from that, in terms of our perspective, what we've kind of come to a conclusion as. But also, as I said, we're here to hear more input and hear what the community has to say. So, I think that's where we are at, at this presentation. So, did you have anything else to add? And I'm going to say again, I saw somebody else walk in. For this application, it's very important that we have everybody sign in. So, if you can do it on the, at the end, before you leave, just sign your name and address on the sign in sheet at some point before you leave. With that, I will open it up for questions and comments and thoughts. Feel free to, since we are recording, you are welcome to just go up to the, the dais. You can come here. We would like you to be at the microphone so that you can. Yeah. So, the microphones are important for BevCam and recording. So, we just asked that everybody go up to the microphone to speak.
Well, hello. I'm so glad about this opportunity for the community. I specifically said I wasn't going to speak. I thought I was going to sit there and ask a question. Here I am. Just a couple of questions about the feedback process. I know there's a survey that's going to go out. Can you say a little bit more about the focus groups that have happened and whether there will be any more, or is that the initial part? And then, now, we're moving on to the survey?
Yes. So, the, the focus groups and the stakeholder outreach was, for those, were, that was the initial part, to kind of really hone in on the people who are doing work in the community with our low and moderate income population and see how they're, what their experiences are. And, and then, the public survey was intended to come next. We actually have that survey available, I should point out, in Albanian, Portuguese, Spanish, and English. And it was, in fact, the translation part that really held us back. This is the first time that we've translated a survey into multiple languages. And the translation was easy, but getting it into our survey program that we signed up for and use for this purpose took a lot longer than we thought. So, that is, survey is out there in, in four different languages. We're very excited about that. It will all be combined into English in the end through the program. So, we will have that feedback. And then, this was, the public hearing is also that one other component to hear from other people. So, so, yes, there are, there will not be, I'm not anticipating any other future stakeholder groups, but I'm happy to talk to anybody and have a, you know, one-on-one meeting as well if there's additional feedback.
My name is Donald Preston. I live at Three Pickett Street here in Beverly. For years, I've been involved with Habitat for Humanity on the Essex County. And we have done rehabs in PBD, Danvers, and it's been very rewarding for the families. In most cases, it's, it's an attempt to keep people in their homes so they don't have to leave it. And it can be everything from accessibility ramp to repainting a house, a new roof, a water heater, a heating system, a modified bathroom. All of these things for a family on fixed income and in our low-income brackets are impossible to do on their own budgets. So, we've been able to do it in communities that have funded it. So, we'd look forward to seeing this in Beverly because I know the need is there. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I know. We are talking closely with Habitat and PBD to understand how they run their program, those programs.
Hi there. Hannah Corman Martino, 40 Wallace Street. Currently, the president of War Two Civic Association. I want to learn more about transportation and how, what is being discussed and if we can put something in for that. I'm lucky to have a car, and I live downtown. I can walk to many places. But I know a lot of people who don't have healthy bodies to walk places or the means to pay for a taxi, Uber, whatnot. And they have to figure out the Beverly Shuttle and the other. Salem Skipper is very limited. And so, if we could expand our options somehow, I think that would be very beneficial for a good chunk of the population here. Thank you.
Yeah, that is an area that we have explored and are still looking at some data around. One of the, it, we think it's going to be more challenging to provide, to use this grant for that type of service. But I'm still trying to collect a little bit more information, like, for example, the need to serve, you know, 70% of the recipients need to, or beneficiaries need to be low and moderate income people. And how do we demonstrate that? And, you know, one of the challenges, for example, with the K2 Shuttle, if we were to operate that, that I'm trying to uncover right now is that we don't operate, we don't, they don't collect data on who rides the service. So, we would have to limit it to a certain geography where we know there are only low and moderate income, or primarily low and moderate income riders. And, and so, I'm not sure if that's the best way to run a service. So, we're, we're trying to see what data is out there and whether, and then what the cost, or kind of cost benefit would be to expand one of our existing services.
Nathan Seavy on Nine Kernwood Ave. Can you tell us a little bit more about how the program was used to pay for housing? Was that direct subsidies? Was it, how, to just give money to the homeowners? How did that work?
Well, so, there's a couple of different, so you're talking about the kind of housing assistance, housing rehab?
Yeah, just any, anything to do with the housing in the past.
So, there's an applicant, there'll be an application. You have to demonstrate that you are a low-income person or household. And then, there'll be a variety of grant agreement, basically. And we have, the city has mortgages on all of those old property, holds a mortgage on all of those properties, which, over time, many of them still exist. And people find out when they're selling their house that they need to discharge this mortgage, which is the end of this program that I deal with more frequently than I anticipated. You know, we're closing tomorrow. We need this mortgage discharged. And then, I need to figure out, do you need to pay it back or not? So, there's a whole, from the history of the program, there's a variety of loan components. So, some were, some were, had repayment, some were declining balances. Most, some were no interest, or the interest went away at the end. There is a variety of different programs, different mechanisms for that, that loan payment. And in time, some of it became a grant. So, if you owned the house for long enough, you didn't have to pay it back. But if you sold the house before a certain period of time, you would have to pay all or some of the money back. And so, but this, the mortgage still needs to be discharged at some point. The city's interest in the house needs to be discharged. So, that's typically how, whether it was the lead abatement program, the home rehab program, or the first-time home buyers program, I think those all fell into, you know, had, had that, some sort of, the city holds basically some, an interest, a legal interest in the property.
I know a lot of what stops people from doing rehabs or building ADUs, like the, or redeveloping a property is, you know, bringing a case before the zoning board. And I don't know if that's a possibility to sort of remove an obstacle for people, right? It can be $20,000 just to find out if you can even do something, you know, with your property. But it also seems like a less of a lift, instead of, you know, paying hundreds of thousands to actually do it, if you can just remove the obstacle and sort of help people along that path. Or maybe an education part, maybe that already exists in the government to educate people about the process?
To, and they said.
Oh, but it has to, it has to be specifically for low LMI.
So, this program does.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And, but for, you know, when we, when I started here almost 10 years ago, we were working on kind of streamlining our permitting and kind of removing some of those barriers, trying to remove barriers and make it easier. remove barriers and make it easier generally for people to do projects. It's still a hurdle. I, I get it. A lot of people do not understand zoning and, and the way I do. And that's kind of a constant balance, you know, of, of what the restrictions can be. I mean, for example, you know, with the ADU ordinance that moved from a special permit process before the state, which is now the state has adopted accessory dwelling units by right throughout the entire state. Before that, you know, the city adopted our own ordinance a year ahead of that, which we used to have to, you needed a special permit to build an accessory dwelling unit, and you could only have your family live in there also. And then, when they moved out or died, you had to rip out the kitchen. So, now, you know, we changed that to by right and removed the family requirement in late 2023 as one of those means to try and make things a little bit easier. But yes, there are still, like, in tech, people would only need a building permit. We did have 12 go through the application process in that year, which was more than we expected. But yeah, there were still some that might need a variance or, or a finding, need to go to the zoning board, so.
Darlene, if I could, so, to Nathan's question, nobody should have to spend any money to determine whether or not what they want to do on their property is within the zoning, meaning by right, right? They can always come and, and sit with planning staff. If somebody's looking for, if somebody requires special relief, be it a special permit or a variance, that's where there's a process. But, but certainly, any, any property owner can come to City Hall any day we're open and sit with planning staff to, to go through, you know, what their property, where it sits, what zone it's in, what is, you know, by right. And as, as Ms. Winn also said, we, and I'm pointing to my colleagues on the City Council and Planning Department, you know, did pass an ADU ordinance, and now that the state has passed theirs, it is by right, you know, throughout the community, throughout the state, to build accessory dwelling units, to build that, you know, that separate apartment within a building or a standalone on a property. So, it'll be interesting to see where that goes. You know, when, when we, just to give a little historical context, we did have a community development office as part of city government. The lieutenant governor was our community development director back in the mid-1990s, by the way. We had to close our community development office in 2015, I think it was. We had two staff people because the last CDBG grant that we had received was running out of money. And the grant helped, the grant actually, a percentage of it could be used for administration, for staff. But as Ms. Winn said, that there was money that cycled back through periodically when people sold homes. And so, while there was grant money that was spent down, then there was some remaining balance and some money cycled back through. We actually were able to help Beverly Main Streets keep the facade improvement grant going. Some of you who are on the board of Beverly Main Streets with me, you know, remember that, you know, that has helped a lot of local business owners, you know, with their businesses. So, you know, if, if we go the route of a housing rehab program again, it, it will be because, in part, because we have thousands of old wood-framed, single- and multifamily houses in Beverly that are 100, 120, 130 years old, and some older than that. But certainly, a whole generation of, of multifamily, largely multifamily wood-frame housing was built when the shoe was built. So, you know, there's a, there's a tiredness, and there's a need so that our residents in those, in those homes have a better standard of living. There's such a lot of need there, that that, you know, that may be, end up being the bulk of the application. Do you, do you want to ask our consultants to say hi? I mean, they're, they're not in the room, they're on, but, but we should probably have them say hi and maybe give a little bit of context if they want. Makes sense?
Judy. So, hi, everyone. I'm Judy Barrett. I can't see all of you, unfortunately, but I can hear your voices, and we're kind of trying to digest the questions that are coming in. I'd like also Laurel to have a chance to introduce herself. The two of us have been kind of working on this project with a third person who couldn't join us tonight.
Hello, I'm Laurel Muir. I work with Judy at Barrett Planning Group, and yeah, have enjoyed working with Darlene, Erin, and Catherine on this. But more to come, and yeah, just excited to listen to the public tonight.
Yes. Mayor or Darlene, is there something specific you would like us to comment on? Just so I don't, because I think you're doing fine, but if there's something you want us to elaborate on, we're happy to do that.
Sure, Judy. Just to help the, the members of the community who are in the room here, you know, we have a sense of things that may score better, may land better with, you know, with the state as they evaluate the applications. Do you want to share any, you know, any of your intel on that?
Yeah, I, I can tell you, I can address this from a couple of perspectives. One, my career started in community development, so I go way back with this program, and I'm way older than Darlene. So, I've known the program for a long time, and I've seen it evolve. So, that's just sort of one thing. And then, I actually ran the program for a few years at the state level. And I've worked on it off and on, you know, since as a consultant. So, I can't say enough for the CDBG program. I will just say this, when you are a recipient of CDBG funds from the state, which is a different way of getting the money than, say, Salem, which is an entitlement city, or PBD, they get it directly from HUD. So, you guys would be getting it from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And the state programs have a right to kind of establish their own policy preferences, which may make some CDBG activities more competitive than others. And, and it's for that reason that we've tried to suggest to the city, you know, think about, about your needs and what the Commonwealth is interested in, and see where there's a good alignment. And I think housing and housing rehab in particular, which is a longstanding, you know, well-used way of investing CDBG funds in a community, I think that's kind of an obvious one. CDBG-assisted housing rehab rarely triggers someone having to go to a Board of Appeals. It just isn't that kind of improvement. It is typically, I've got this house, my roof is not, you know, my roof is leaking, my heating system has stopped. I, I have lead paint in my house and little kids. So, it's very much within the shell of the existing building. And some of that work can be very expensive, and people can't afford to do it. Sometimes it's tenants who are lower moderate income in a multifamily building, and the building needs a lot of work, and the landlord really can't swing it and also keep the rents down. So, CDBG becomes an important subsidy that way. Anyway, for, for a lot of reasons, housing rehab does make sense. I, I have a lot of sympathy for people who are bringing up needs for transportation. Transportation gets to be tricky because the city has to show to the state that the funds spent on transportation principally benefited lower moderate income people. So, if you're providing a transportation service to a senior center, it's pretty easy to do because seniors are considered, almost by default, to be an eligible lower moderate income population. But when you're thinking about adding a run to an existing route, or existing, you know, transit system that may have different stops along the way, now you've got a different problem in that you don't necessarily have an easy way to show what the lower moderate income benefit is. So, designing a transportation service that's going to be both eligible and meet that national objective of primarily benefiting lower moderate income people gets tricky. It can be done, but the city's going to need to think about, how do we design this so it's going to work and so we can convince the Commonwealth, if you give us this money and we invest it in this service, we're going to be able to show you that we met a national objective, and therefore, you state of Massachusetts will not get in trouble with HUD. So, you know, each activity has its own challenges. Housing rehab requires some capacity. It's great when you've got a regional partner who can provide that. Some social services don't require a lot of city capacity, but they do require oversight. So, every activity has challenges and also some benefits. And I think ultimately, what you have to decide is, how do we become a CDBG recipient again? How do we convince the Commonwealth that we have capacity to do what we'd like to do? And how do we make sure that the dollars we get are going to provide the greatest possible benefit to our city? So, that's kind of the frame I think everybody needs to use to think about this.
Thanks, Judy. I, I wanted to just amplify that. In brainstorming this with Judy and her team, the ability to be successful in a grant application and then receive money to do something that can show that the money's making a difference will hopefully get us into a rhythm of being able to succeed and stay in the program and, and be able, and, you know, repeat rounds to continue to receive funds. So, that's part of the, part of the strategy, right, Judy?
Mm-hmm. Yes, it is, sir. Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we already do, like subsidized bus passes and stuff? Because that might be a way of showing it's only going, like, if you can apply for a subsidized bus pass or a subsidized Uber pass or something, that's, then you have to apply for it to show that you're LMI, and then the city can subsidize that as a way of getting into the transportation.
For the Kada Shuttle, the, it costs $8 a month. So, the city subsidizes the service in general, but it is actually free. Kada has received a grant, so the Kada Shuttle is free for the next two years. So, that would be difficult for us to do in that sense. You can register, on the Salem Skipper, you can register for a reduced rate. They, they don't require a lot of documentation for that, so I also don't know how we would collect that. But that, that could be some data, that data that we can collect. I mean, they, they do have data on, you know, who's riding or who's taking that benefit, whether it's a senior or somebody who's registering as a low-income resident. But again, we are, we are already subsidizing that service just by providing it, so there's a balance there of, like, how much more can we do in the...
That's the brainstorming.
Yeah, no, no, I, I get it. I mean, that's a way to collect data that we don't have yet.
And Darlene, not to forget also that if it's a service you're already providing, you can't use CDBG funds to replace an existing service. It would be to create a new service or to expand an existing one. So, just keep that in mind, too.
Hi, I'm Tiffany, 35 Broadway, and also involved with the Civic Association. Just to go back to the question about focus groups and stakeholders, I did the survey well, earlier too, while we were sitting here. It was easy. Who are the stakeholders?
Well, I sent out, I used our constituent services list. So, one, one was, there was two groups of city staff, so kind of all city staff that provide human services, public safety, building, building code enforcement, kind of all department heads. That were, those were a couple of stakeholder groups. And the rest was a combination of, like, communications to city councilors, neighborhood groups, the...
Did you hear that? Did it be involved?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't.
And Ronnie, Ronnie Jacobson's constituent services list, so like, she had a whole big list that I used to send out. Everybody, you know, various bootstraps, family promise, the school department. We had about 30 people who responded. I emailed many more people than that, all the churches in the community, kind of like this broad network of trying to reach as many people as possible in a short period of time between sending it out and, and getting it back. But yeah, so, trying to think of anybody else, transportation service providers, senior care, kind of veteran services, those types of...
Was Life Bridge involved?
Yes, Life Bridge was invited. Were not able to participate at the last minute, but I've been in contact.
I think it, it's probably fair to say that you, in, in your professional space, and instinctively, probably were inviting as widespread around the community as you could and with Judy and her team's guidance to make sure, I mean, you know, this all goes into the application, right? The type of and degree of and effectiveness of outreach. So, you know, I, I think it's, I think the effort certainly has been there to be, you know, widespread and comprehensive.
And Board of Health, Laura?
Yes, yep, yep, Board of Health. Yeah, I'm trying to think.
Thank you. And Bruce?
Yep.
Bruce is always invited.
I know.
Yeah.
Hi, Judy. My name is Wangari, and I'm the DIB Director, also working on this wonderful project. I was away, and I'm excited to share, hopefully to answer Dr. Mackenzie DeFrances's also question about possible other workshops that we might have done. Last week, we did do a workshop together for digital equity with our seniors at the senior center, and it was an opportunity for us to identify needs and barriers, especially what local government can do. We've learned that if you go on our website and you click on the button that says "I'd Like To," a lot of the permits, licenses are now available online. I know that a lot of other services in the city are transitioning that way, and we are learning that it's not just our seniors that have this need, there's also people my age that are not necessarily savvy as well with the computers, but we are, as a city, are starting to transition that way. So, I guess a question for Judy is, what are digital services looking like for this grant application? I feel like this is a new territory for Beverly. Our diversity has increased, so we have a significant community of people using languages other than English. They're using smartphones to access government. We're having communication barriers there. So, I see digital equity, language access, kind of like a new venture, but also a great way to advance our services. So, I'm hoping for some hope here, Judy. Thank you.
Judy, you're muted.
I just figured that out. That is a really good example of an activity that if you are a Salem or a PBD or HAVR, and you get that fund, you get this funding directly from HUD, it's easier to launch some activities like that, in my experience, anyway. I think it's easier than it is when you are a state recipient. So, and let me try to explain why. And I'm, I'm not discouraging anybody from going down this path, but I think it's something that you may want to kind of reestablish community development capacity for first and then work on more. We worked on a project a couple of years ago around communications access for both disability populations and people with limited English for the city of Quincy. And it was a real eye-opener about the struggles city staff have trying to communicate, the problems that, that the public with limited English or other, you know, kinds of communication issues. It's a huge problem. And because of that, you know, HUD is really promoting digital equity. But I don't think the Commonwealth's application process is quite there yet. Bear in mind that when you're a state agency and you're receiving this money from HUD, you've got to make sure that your multiple recipients out there, the cities of Beverly and towns of whatever, you know, all over the Commonwealth, are going to carry out programs that create a very low risk for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts because HUD will monitor the state. So, if you're funding activities that are going to be kind of a stretch to demonstrate lower moderate income benefit or eligibility, the Commonwealth, because this is a competitive program, not an entitlement, is a little more conservative, I think, than sometimes HUD might be because it's just a different relationship. The HUD entitlement cities have ongoing funding, therefore, they have ongoing capacity. When you're trying to ramp up as a community that has not had a community development office or, or that kind of staff capacity for a long time, my best advice for all of you is keep this first application, this application simple so you can reestablish yourselves in the system, and then you can try things that I think we all agree need to be addressed. But I think coming in after multiple years of not being funded, this activity would not be one of my first recommendations, even though I totally sympathize with and agree with what you're saying. I think it's a, I think it's a next-tier activity, and also, there may be better funding sources for it. for it that off the top of my head I'm not thinking of. But I just want everybody to understand the Commonwealth's position is always kind of more risk averse, if you will, than you might want them to be. But if they get in trouble with HUD, it just creates a lot of issues for the program. So anything new or different is harder to do. I remember years ago when the program funded a, a fire engine. And I was like, entitlement cities do that all the time, but, but when you're a small town and you're having, it's harder to prove that lower moderate income people are going to be the principal beneficiaries. That's the kind of activity where the state is likely to be a lot more conservative than perhaps HUD might be. I don't know if that helps to answer the question, but I would see digital equity services or communications access services as a next tier.
Judy, let, let me ask you this. We got a room full and we got some other people remote who are community leaders who really have a, a good sense of the pulse of, of our needs.
Yeah.
If, if we end up applying with the bulk of the application being for housing rehab in some fashion, and then we, we have a second piece to the application that is a, more of a social service focus, and that would be up to 15% of the, the awarded funds, can you share with folks here what you think we're really deciding amongst in between? You know, what, what would you get excited about from the perspective of it helping us to get a yes from the state? You know, where should we be focusing any other piece of the application? Because the, the need is on every front that we can think of, right?
That's right. So in the spirit of community development, I would say you should be funding where your needs are greatest. The practical side of me, the program, former program director side of me says, I want you to remember what I just said about risk. There are activities in the social services realm that are simply easier to fund because the populations they serve are presumed to be lower moderate income. Therefore, the degree to which you have to collect actual documentation of household income drops. And those populations include seniors, families, victims of domestic violence, unaccompanied youth, disability, services that, that are designed for people with disabilities are almost like, they're categorically eligible and they're, and the population is considered categorically low mod. So again, it's like, how do you design an activity when you're going in after several years of not having community development capacity? How do you design activities that are going to be the lowest possible risk for you, given, it's almost like you have to, you have to balance or try to find a place where high need and low risk come together. And I, I think I would encourage you to think that way. It's, I'm trying to, we're trying to help you get an application that's going to be competitive. And that means that you may get some lower risk advice from us, knowing that that lower risk may mean not going after something that's a most, that's a critical need.
Thanks Judy. Folks, do you have questions? You want to, do you want to brainstorm? I really want to get the conversation flowing. Do you want to, and it feels tilted when you all have to go up to the microphone.
We do have to go to the mic just because it's being recorded, so thank you.
What about checking with Brenda with Ellis Square Friends, just to brainstorm with her? Because she delivers a lot of, her meals aren't just come and eat here. They're also going out to the food insecure, to people who are struggling to pay for their medication or their rent and what are they going to not pay for? So maybe it's not going to have food. And it delivers just, I think, a meal plus a lunch for the next day. And it's almost, I think it's all really volunteer-driven and people donate items for food as well as cook for it.
I, I think it's a great idea, the challenge that we're going to hit on all these, that we can't fund something that's already happening, that's already a program. So it has to be an expansion of a program, potentially there's an avenue for that, or an entirely new program. But yeah, I mean, and I haven't, I believe she was on my list, but I haven't directly spoken to Brenda, but it is a good, a good suggestion. We heard a lot of that from bootstraps as well as, you know, similar in terms of talking about food insecurity and, and the sheer number of people that are coming to Beverly bootstraps and the increase in service that they're finding there.
Tiffany, please.
I mean, we could get a handheld.
If it's a simple question, I can repeat it for you.
So, so how do we help? What do you need from us to, she said to get in contact with you, so what can we write a letter or fly one, you know, we're used to like right here.
So, so, yeah. So as you're, as you're here tonight, how do you really help the process lead to a final application and, and an application's going to get funded? Darlene?
I mean, there's two questions there. So first, you know, here tonight, we're looking to be expansive in our outreach and hear from, you know, most of you are people who were not in the, the stakeholder meetings. So get additional feedback in terms of what the need is that you experience or that you see in your work or your community, in addition to sharing the information about the program and what we're trying to do and what our goals are. The application does have letters of support. Ms. Barrett, who has another meeting and is leaving, is going to work on collecting letters of support from community organizations and things like that. So where we will be sending out a request for that, probably early next week or the following. Yeah, sure. Yes.
Hannah, again. I lived in Worcester 20 years ago and I was on AmeriCorvista and the neighborhood I was serving, the small organization, was in a very low-income neighborhood, heavy on immigrants, heavy on a lot of that kind of thing. And one of the things that we attended the CDBG meeting was to reopen the pool in the neighborhood, but it was specific to the neighborhood. Is that something that we focus on an area in Beverly? Because I know that there's pockets of disenfranchised folks here in the city, but is that?
That is another strategy, that you can focus on a specific geographic area. And there are, Judy can probably correct me, but there's a higher demonstration.
Because if you need data, then that's a...
Yes, it's a little bit, there's a little bit of a higher threshold in terms of determining that. But I think in our past applications, we have focused, the 2016, 2015 application programs that we did not get, did focus on the Gloucester Crossing area in terms of some infrastructure improvements. You know, I, I think the whole Croft Park work that's already, that's now being done was part of one of those applications or some of that work around some, maybe not the same exact project. But, so yes, so we have in the past focused on kind of some, some projects or activities that are geographically focused in a concentration of our lower, lower-income communities. But we, we have, as of now, stayed away from that just because they're, you know, as we're trying to get back into the program, we're trying to simplify it. And that might have a higher threshold in order for us to minimize our risk, as Judy was saying.
To Hannah's question, Judy, I know we talked a little bit when we met recently about, you know, targeting a neighborhood and, and certainly in terms of eligibility, if we were to identify one or more of our housing authority neighborhoods where the total population are, you know, are by definition of their, of their housing model, low income, or a project-based Section 8 neighborhood like we talked about at Apple Village, we would, we would, we would satisfy that concern of, of being able to reliably identify that everybody's eligible. So have you seen those types of, you know, clustering or identification of certain neighborhoods targeted in other applications and, and, you know, you know, whether, whether it be for social, social service need or something else? You're muted.
I keep stalling this off, so I won't bother you. I know when I was involved with the program and more recently working with entitlement cities, a so-called area benefit activity is very common. But you have to be able to show that both the area is lower moderate income and the activity you're doing is principally going to benefit them. So we use an example we discussed, Mayor, which was a transportation service dedicated to that, to the residents of that development. So if they're the people who are going to be the, the ridership, the beneficiaries, and no one else is going to be serviced by that group, then I think it's fairly easy to say this is a low-mod benefit activity because all the benefit, all the users of the service will be lower moderate income. And then you'd have to kind of deal with some other things about cost benefit and so forth. But at the national objective level, I, I think you can address it. Where it can get tricky is, say you have a lower moderate income neighborhood, it is clearly a low-mod neighborhood in terms of available census data, in terms of what you know about the residents, maybe, you know, a cluster of public housing or something. And there's a, an old neighborhood, there's an old playground there and you want to fix it because there are children who live in that housing. That can be a trickier activity because then you have to show, yeah, the people who live in this area are low-mod and the people using that playground are also the low-mod residents of this neighborhood. So if you have a playground that when you fix it up is now actually going to be available to a wider geography or more people are likely to use it, now you have a greater challenge trying to show that the principal beneficiaries are lower moderate income. So you have to think about what's the activity, where is it, and who are the principal beneficiaries? And all of those needs to line up.
Can I take some comments?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a couple questions online. Annie and Rolando are asking about the Bridge Street project. This is not part of today's meeting. There is mayor information on the city's website about the Bridge Street, uh, the bridge project. We have a page for the...
Yeah, it is, you're right.
Bridge Street or Bridge, but yeah, there's...
Well, what's the, what's the...
They're asking about the Bridge Street project, an update, but we can...
Oh, so sure. Well, you're right, it's not part of this, but why not? So the Bridge Street reconstruction of the road and the sidewalk and the intersections, that's a state-funded project that heavy, heavy construction all last year. What remains to be done this year are sidewalks, the signalization of some intersections, handicap ramps at the sidewalks, the, the wiring that had to be moved from, that needs to be moved from the old utility poles to the new ones that have been installed will be followed by those old poles being taken out. And then when that's done, there'll be the final coat of pavement. Two, two layers of pavement have been installed, the third one will go in. And the goal is that that project be done by fall of this year, if that's helpful to the person who asked.
Okay. And then there's Stacia Chamberlain, who's wondering if any of the grant will be used to complete existing public projects on tap. That is not something we've contemplated. I believe you're probably talking about infrastructure projects. They're already funded, most likely.
I mean, well, the Bridge Street project is, is fully funded by the state.
Well, that was a separate question, just separate person.
What's that question ask?
If we're, if, if any of the funding will be used to fund projects, we're already in our, like, infrastructure.
I would say Judy would probably say that's not eligible.
I would think so as well.
Use for the money.
Yeah.
Judy's nodding, okay.
Yeah. And then another question from Stacia, can any of the grant be used to complete, oh, it's the same thing, existing public projects, okay. Could an argument, could it augment, I can't, I should put my glasses on. Could it augment an existing public project, such as adding a community center, public good to the waterfront project?
You have to show lower moderate income benefit.
Yeah.
You want to repeat that just in case?
You have to, Judy's saying, you have to show low or moderate income benefit as the principal beneficiary of the project. I'm not thinking of any at the, at the moment, but...
Thanks. I just wanted to echo support for the housing rehab program and then also ask, it may not be a first round thing, but can CDBG grant funds be used for like first-time homebuyer programs or rental assistance for people, too?
Yes, I think we have used it for those funds in the past. Now, that's when we were in entitlement communities, so I don't know how that weighs in terms of, but I think it would be an eligible expense.
I will just point out that the city is also part of the North Shore Home Consortium. And the home, federal home program is a better vehicle for first-time home, homebuyer assistance than CDBG. CDBG has some funky administrative requirements. It's not really designed for direct assistance for housing, such as you've asked about, but the home program is. So hopefully the city is, you know, weighing in on what the activities will be included in that home consortium plan.
A question around infrastructure. Where does ADA compliance lane this conversation? Would that still be aligned around something continuous that we can continue to update? That's not new, but a real need for our community?
Yes. If you have, go ahead.
No, I'm complete. Thank you.
That, that is one of the best activities to do if you're trying to do a public improvement because people with disabilities are categorically defined as lower moderate income. So any sort of, you know, a ramp to a building, an elevator, sidewalk ramps, anything that is going to and to make it possible, to make the, the built environment more usable to people with a disability is going to be eligible. It's going to be both an eligible construction activity and it would be a national objective.
Thank you, Judy.
You're welcome.
Could we, would that include like making all of our shuttle bus stops accessible?
It could. Are these city-owned bus stops?
City-operated, the shuttle that we operate.
I would, I would suggest that...
Not, maybe not the best idea.
Given that the maximum grant award available is $850,000 and we're looking at a 15% piece to that, if, if it were to be an ADA infrastructure project, it probably would be a, we'd probably be looking to find one kind of individual discrete project because you'd spend that money fast.
Yeah.
Well, Mayor, if I could just, a social service activity to assist people with disabilities is subject to that 15% cap. But an infrastructure project or construction project is not.
Okay.
So you have to think about the different activities. It's social services that are subject to that cap. But I remember vividly, 30 years ago, the town of Amherst made their entire downwalks, downtown sidewalk system accessible, installing all-new handicap ramps and so forth because it was, it was an eligible activity, it was a construction activity, and it, as I said, categorically met a lower moderate income benefit standard. They didn't fix all the sidewalks, they focused on the ramps, they focused on where is disability access impeded in this system. Now, they had existing community development capacity and they were able to document those locations, study them, you know, develop a plan with their DPW for what that would cost. So, you know, they were able to kind of create a, create a competitive application. Years ago, not too long after ADA went into effect, the little town of Lee, Massachusetts, out in the Berkshires, had a situation where most of their little downtown businesses were not accessible and everyone was going to have to figure out how to make their storefront accessible. Well, instead of making all those commercial property owners do that, the town of Lee had an engineer design a system that brought the sidewalk up, gradually ramped... had an engineer design a system that brought the sidewalk up, gradually ramped, you know, from its lowest point and ramped up the sidewalk so that it met everyone's threshold and now those small businesses did not have to change their whole storefront. But that entire infrastructure project met a national objective of lower moderate income benefit because it was making the buildings accessible to people with disabilities. You could do some cool things around disability access.
Are there any more comments in the room? I don't see any online.
It's a wrap.
And, yeah, the only other, I guess the reminder I would say is that if you still have thoughts or comments or something comes up after, please email me. Of course, you can email me anytime, you don't have to follow the deadline, but for this purpose, if it's something you want us to consider, the sooner the better. And also, since we have your contact info, we will share the survey with you. You should have it, if you take a flyer, it's on there, please share that. We will, we're working on getting that out tomorrow as well to our list, but we appreciate anybody's efforts and it's on the website. So anybody's, there is a Beverly MA slash CDBG is the short name, should get you outside of this building, should get you onto that page. For some reasons, it doesn't work inside the building, but, but yes, then that has, you know, all of the information and we'll have this presentation up there and the YouTube link sometime tomorrow. So we really appreciate everybody coming, who's still here? Oh, there is another question in the chat. Are you in the process of developing a shortlist of eligible communities and persons? Thank you for sharing my email. Are, so, I don't necessarily understand the question. I mean, we, we know from, like, we have mapped the demographics based on census blocks, so we know generally.
I'd say the answer is no, but we'd be happy to hear some ideas and thinking on it.
Okay.
Right, I mean, just based on how she wrote the question. Be interested in having her follow up with us if that.
Yeah, if you want to follow up with more of what you're thinking behind that. I mean, I think if we do a housing rehab program, then, then as we have gone through and identified, we've taken a look at properties that we think may benefit from it. We can also, you know, there are ways to identify and then do an outreach to those properties specifically to participate in the program. Obviously, we would need them to apply and demonstrate their income qualifications, but, but we are, we would work on that.
There we are.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we know who the eligible population is, we're not trying to restrict it at this point to a certain geography, so.
Yeah, that's all.
Yep. Hi.
Hi, Brenda Murphy, 15 Bertram Street. I'm with Essex County Habitat and also Beverly Main Streets. And if there's anything we can do to help support this process, please reach out to either organization and let us know. And Essex County Habitat can be shovel-ready.
Yes, thank you. All right. Harry, nothing. I thank you all for coming and everybody who possibly participated online or watched on BevCam and we will see you soon. Have a good night.
Thanks, y'all.